Right, good evening and welcome to our much anticipated February board meeting. Thank you all for hanging in there with us as we work to resolve some audio issues for the Zoom tonight. Our first order of business is board minutes approval. We have two minutes to be approved tonight. The first are the January regular board meeting minutes, and we also have a January closed session minutes to be approved. So I'll start with the January regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes or comments? No? Right, do we have a motion? Oh, no, no, no. All right. All right, well, if there are no corrections to the minutes, I will deem the minutes as approved by unanimous consent vote. Moving on to the January closed session minutes. Are there any corrections or comments to those minutes? Okay, I will also deem the January closed session minutes as approved by unanimous consent vote. Right, we are going to change up the agenda a little bit tonight. We have some guests on our Zoom, so I will hand it over to Mrs. Stein to talk about the state and school report.
Awesome, thank you so much. So first of all, I want to welcome, we have some, some guests from afar. So I'm gonna go ahead and share the screen and then we're gonna give some opportunity. I'll come off of share screen so you can actually see the, the artists and the talented folks when we get a second here to, to do that. So that is not what I wanted to do, so let's just go over here. All right, so we, we received really exciting news and that is that we have four different students that have had awards presented to them from the high school scholastic mid Carolina region. And that, that means that they're going to go on to further, further competition. And as you can see, I'm gonna try to scooch this over just so we can see that. So, so the different, the different artists are Maya Dabney, who has been in front of the board many times before for, for her art expertise. Emma Smallwood, Charlie Weaver, and we also have a student from, from the middle school, which we'll talk about in just a minute. But this competition is so prestigious that as you can see, some of the past winners is the National Poet Laureate Amanda Gordon Gorman, Steven Steelberg, and Andy Warhol. And so Maya and Charlie will be recognized at a virtual ceremony and then they will have their art posted up at the Mint Museum. And then Maya has a gold key winning portfolio. So we've had individual pieces, but we've never had a whole portfolio. So she is the first artist in Lake Norman Charter's history to have their portfolio recognized. And that will go up for national competition. So before I flip over to these, and we're gonna actually start with our, with our middle school person first. But Ms. Matoka, is there anything just to set the stage and I'll let you say anything about the individual artist, but is there anything else you would like the, the board to know and the audience to know about the, this competition?
So it is the most prestigious competition for high school, for actually middle school and high school students. The region, at the regional level, it's North and South Carolina, and I believe there are approximately thirty counties that we compete against, thousands of work. And works are judged and it actually is sponsored, our regional competition is sponsored by UNCC. So the, the first two winners, our middle school winner is a writing, she won writing awards and those are honorable mentions. Kate Champion. And you see the, the two winning poet, poetry pieces there. And then Emma Smallwood won, also won an honorable mention. So Kate Champion is an eighth grader at the middle school and then Emma Smallwood, a 10th grader, obviously at the high school, an honorable mention for drawing. And then Charlie Weaver has won a silver key for the piece called Breathe, which is a drawing piece that also incorporates sign language. And then a mixed media piece, the mixed media piece won an honorable mention. The silver key actually will be exhibited at the Mint Museum and from March to May, or from, I'm sorry, March to April, along with Maya Dabney's pieces, which we'll see next. So Charlie won a silver key and an honorable mention. So the silver keys and the gold keys are exhibited at the Mint Museum during March and April. Maya Dabney, like Mrs. Stein said, has been in front of the board many times before. I think every year increasingly does the awards become numerous, obviously, as you see here. What you see in the top right-hand corner is her portfolio. And so she is the first student from Lake Norman Charter who has won a gold key, regional gold key for her whole portfolio. And when you submit a port, only seniors can submit portfolios and when you submit a portfolio, they actually will judge the pieces as a whole and then they also judge them as in individual categories. So the, the other pieces that you see were judged from the portfolio. And so the the piece, the piece on the far left, the, the mask and then the, the flag below the mask, that is actually a front and back piece. So the flag, it says, say their names on one side and on the other side, Maya has the names, the, the flag is covered with names. So she, and she hands, she's hand stitched that and hand embroidered it. So those three pieces are actually individual gold key pieces. And then the piece on the far right at the bottom, won an honorable mention in drawing. All of the gold key pieces, the gold key portfolio and the three gold key pieces will go on to New York and be judged in March for the national competition. And Maya also is our first and only gold medalist, national gold medalist. She's, she's won gold medals the last two years. So we're hoping, you know, that she goes on and she, she won a scholarship, a civic expression scholarship also last year. So it's really nice to honor Maya again and also Charlie, Emma and Kate. It just shows the strength of the artistic and writing abilities of our kids.
So I, I've stopped the share just because I want to see the, the wonderful artists. So you can see Charlie there in the middle for us. Charlie, it probably looks a little different for you and then Emma and, and then Kate. So congratulations, gals, on your work. It's, it's amazing. And if there's anything you'd like to, to share with the board, you're welcome to do that, but we're very proud of you. We, we recognize how significant of an accomplishment this is and all of your pieces are beautiful or very well done in the, in the case of Kate, which is the poetry. So Kate, what inspired your poetry? Cause I, I take a look at the, the different themes. I was curious to know what inspired you.
Well, when I went on to my poetry, a lot of different things inspired me environment. Ms. Cook, obviously started me off with my poetry and my first assignment by writing an ode. And I wanted to come up with something that was different and I wanted to come up with something that I've never seen before. So I wanted to talk about my conscience and how even if we don't really like it sometimes, it'll always be with us. Like some people won't be there. And then my second one was actually a science assignment, talking about the water cycle, where I talked about how people won't always be with us, but water will always be with us and it'll always be there to support and help us.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Cook, is there anything you would like to say? I think you're a mute, Ms. Cook. Technology is great, isn't it?
Okay, okay, okay. Yes, so I just wanted to say how proud I am of Kate as well and that her poetry is definitely unique and I, I was very inspired to help motivate her even more after I started to read what she was writing. So I think she's got a great future ahead of her. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I, I also wanted to thank Ms. Cook for recognizing me and my work and entering me into this competition. I mean, Ms. Cook really took the time and energy to pull me aside and educate me about this competition. And she took that moment to change my life. I mean, because of this experience, it's opened my eyes to know what is possible and what has motivated me. And with this, I, I've already started working on my next project where I'm going to be evaluating the impact of artificial intelligence such as ChatGPT in the classroom. This is part of the National Public Radio Competition. Teachers like Ms. Cook change students every day and I just wanted to thank you so much today.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kate. Emma, your drawing is beautiful. How do you decide what you're going to, to use as an inspiration for your piece?
Um, well, so I actually used a picture that I took for an art assignment in seventh grade. And so it was of like a fall pumpkin that was like a braided pumpkin, I guess. And I really liked just like the detail and the value in it. I thought it'd be really cool to try to do that in my art.
Awesome. Well, it turned out beautifully and, and Charlie, we noticed you had a couple of different media choices. How do you, how do you choose what inspires you or how you're gonna express your, your art?
As, as for my pieces, I, I tend to find myself kind of focusing and observing people's faces and especially other like hands. Just like the intricacies and, and details of human form has always kind of inspired me and intrigued me and I love some black and white, some contrast. My mom's an interior designer and so I've kind of grown up thinking about color and its impact and color in my room and my life, how I see it. And so I, I really love to incorporate contrast versus color to display smaller details that sometimes go overlooked by people that don't really have a brain that's, you know, wired to focus on those smaller details.
That's a great answer and it's nice to hear that you're inspired by your mom's work as well. So that's awesome. And, and clearly I just want to commend not only the students and their excellent work, but also our teachers that, as we heard, Emma started with a project in seventh grade that led into something. And we just really have some phenomenally inspirational educators. So thank you, Ms. Matoka and Ms. Cook as well. So, and you guys, you, the great thing about Zoom, you don't have to stay on and listen to the rest of the meeting. So it was great to have you here. Congratulations. Okay, so a couple, couple other things for the superintendent's report. We'll just roll right into that. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Abel, who's gonna give just a quick update about where we are on the HVAC system repair at the elementary school.
Good evening. So we, we were able to source parts. Parts should arrive in Charlotte on the thirteenth of February. The tech company that's doing the work said it'll take them about a week to get the first tower up and running. So Monday, the thirteenth, I would imagine the, the parts will be on site Tuesday, the fourteenth. So I'm hoping by that Friday, the system will be up and running normally with them, then starting to work on that, the secondary tower the following week, which if we have one tower up and running, we can recalibrate the systems and make them run the way they're supposed to. So with all that said, we actually, and parts came in less, labor's coming in less. So at the end of the day, let's just keep our fingers crossed that it comes in less and to get everything done on time.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. And if you could turn the microphone over to Ms. Lee and while he's doing that, a couple of other things. I want to commend Ms. Valerie Norris, who is our registrar at the high school. And she's gonna be working with Ms. Jennifer Wolf, our registrar here. We're participating as the only charter in a data audit pilot. And that's really saying something to kind of step forward. It's almost like going for any audit, like to volunteer to do that, to, to do that on, on, to benefit the whole state. I thought that was really pretty awesome of them to be willing to take on that extra work and to really make sure that that process is gonna be something that, that works well for schools. So that was, that was something I want to give them a shout out to. Sarah, would you like to talk to us a little bit about the twenty-fifth Silver Bration?
Sure, Shannon, thank you. Just a note about this, very high level, we will be having our twenty-five hour event, which will celebrate our twenty-five years of school service. So we're super excited about that. That will begin in the late afternoon on Friday, March thirty-first and will continue onward until Saturday at six, five PM. Five PM, yes, six PM, six PM. So there will be three elements to this. And one of the elements that is definitely garnering the most excitement, I think so far, is Nights Relay. Nights Relay will be a relay-for-life-like-style-run, walk, dance, move, whatever, skip, whatever you want to do other than ride a bike, because that's not allowed on our brand-new track. And but folks will be able to compile teams of eight to twenty-five people and they'll be able to have a blast going all night long doing that. Not, nobody needs to be here for twenty-five straight hours, not even me. But we will definitely have people here all twenty-five hours. And again, this is to commemorate each hour, it equals a year that we have been in school service. The, the fun thing about Nights Relay is that we, as a staff, have nominated four deserving local charities and those charities tomorrow are going out to our greater community, along with the Save the Date, talking about this entire event, the Family Silver Bration. But there'll also will be a link to a voting ballot in that with those four nominations for charity. And Nights Relay will actually raise money and for this chosen charity. So we're super excited about that, excited to unveil the four nominations that our staff chose. Again, all local charities in our backyard, so to speak, making a difference of impact right here. The other two elements are going to be a pop-up market where local vendors, cultivators, creators, artisans will be able to rent out a spot and sell their wares on Saturday morning and into early Saturday afternoon. And then thirdly, and finally, we will be having a sale celebration, which you can think about a garage sale or a yard sale, except taking place in our high school student parking lot. And again, those spaces will be available for purchase, one through five, and whatever folks want. And they will be able to set up early, early Saturday morning and again, sell there in a community like yard sale, but in the parking lot in the morning on Saturday, food trucks, music, a great atmosphere, all kinds of fun things that we're working on pulling together for that. So we're really excited.
Thanks, Sarah. And it is really exciting because there's lots of different volunteers that are stepping up, both staff and family volunteers that are helping to put this together to kind of culminate our twenty-fifth year. So marking, marking the calendar for that weekend, there's a lot of fun stuff happening. And my last shout out, our counseling department at the high school has been very intentional this year about trying to expand their reach and making sure that people are aware of what is going on and some of the different changes that are happening and the additional supports. And there's a bunch of programs that they're hosting coming up. So I want to start by showing you a video. The, the counselors, I, they do not always love being on video, partly because they're humble and their, their focus is supporting kiddos. But they have done such a great job. You've probably seen some of their videos where it's ask a counselor. And this is another example of a production with the help of Ms. Jamie Lord that they put together because they've redesigned the counseling space. And we're gonna utilize this video and put in some differing wording on it to help our eighth grade students, gonna be rising ninth grade, to understand where to find their counselors and who those folks are. And then I'm, I'm gonna briefly show you some of the things that are coming up for our counseling department. So excited about the work that they've done to, to really be intentional to outreach this year. So I thought they did a really good job. I think we probably recognized a friendly face of one of our, our board members' children there. And, and then one other thing I wanted to show you guys is this, and you probably have already seen it in your own inbox. But there are a lot of informational nights that are coming up for our families. And we recognize that people are busy and, but we don't want to have a situation where this information is not being prevent, presented in lots of different ways. So a lot of our students are taking advantage of the Career and College Promise Program, which is where we partner with CPCC. And students can do part of their, their work at CPCC and, and come back and forth between the two campuses. So there's a informational session on that and very highly recommend that parents attend that if their kids are gonna be at all interested in that. Because as despite Ms. Casillas's best work, there are a lot of steps to get to, to set that up properly. And they have great counselors that'll be there to help them with that, but it's a, it's a good launching off point. Plus, there's gonna be a Naviance Parent Meeting. Naviance is a program that helps our students to explore their interests and the colleges that may fit their interests as well as compares up to how their performance has been as high school. It just has a wealth of knowledge. So understanding that tool is great. And then we have course registration for all of our rising students for next year. And, and then lastly, a mental health support. And some of these are in the morning, some of these are in the evening and some of them will be taped and, and presented if there's things that parents have to come back to. So again, just really want to commend the counseling department and those that are helping to support that effort. Mr. Smith, Ms. Lee and, and all of our counselors for trying to get the word out and to offer things in a new and exciting way to our families. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Next up, we have support group update and I see Jamila Lindsay out there to provide our PTO update.
Hi there. So update from the PTO, we have been busy getting ready. It sounds crazy, but for the next school year, we are recruiting for different positions to just be in a position to help support the staff fully. Next year for all campuses. Also, we held a, well, we hosted a PTO meeting on Monday night, six o'clock at the high school. We had a really good turnout. We were able to share some PTO fundraising numbers and share all of the different ways that we've been able to support the staff so far this year. And looking into this second semester, we're going to have some, our next luncheon is going to be February tenth. It is Super Bowl themed and so that's coming up next Friday. And then also we are looking to help staff, well, recruit for staffing for our lunch program, which of course is our largest PTO fundraiser. So that's it.
Great, thank you for that update. Mr. Schlegel, I'll hand it over to you for the athletic boosters.
Yeah, good evening. We got a lot of nice stuff and cool things going on. Tomorrow night, we have senior night for our cheerleaders and basketball teams. We're playing South Rowan and we're gonna be recognizing our basketball seniors in between the girl and the boys game. Our cheerleaders will be recognized during halftime of the boys game. Tomorrow, our swim team will be heading to regionals uptown. Our divers will be here at the Aquatic Center. Then next Friday, for those that make it, they will be heading to Cary for the state meet. We have February thirteenth, which is about a week, a little over a week away, is the first day of spring sports. That's our biggest season. We have the most athletes come out. We have the most teams for a season. So we're excited about that. We're gearing up. We're getting all the kids ready. And then also today, we, we officially made it known that we hired a, a new head coach, a new football varsity head coach, Matt Montroy. And he met with the boys this afternoon. We are really, really excited to have him on board. We've heard a lot of positive feedback. We went through an extensive interview process with multiple people from the community, from the school. And I'm really, really excited to have Matthew Montroy with us and the boys seem really excited as well. That's it.
Thank you. Right, we have some representatives here from PNC Investments. So Mr. Tilly, I'll hand it over to you to talk about our investment update for the quarter.
All right, thank you. Yeah, if you guys can pass the mics over, just pleased to welcome and introduce Jamie Parker and Will King. They are representatives from PNC, who is our investment advisor for our, our investment portfolio. And you guys may have remember Jamie from, I think Jamie, you were here back in the spring, I think. Got it. And we'll make sure your mic's working. But we, we've asked them to come and just present our investment results for the year and for the quarter. It's been a very volatile year in terms of the market, so we just want to try to do this at least once a year, especially at the end of the year. Have them come in, bring their expertise, allow, you know, allow them to present and give us an opportunity to ask questions and have a little dialogue if we need. And you know, if you guys want to introduce yourself just briefly and we can go for there. And, and again, same thing applies here. When you're done, feel free to go. No need to stay, but you're welcome if you want.
No, appreciate that, Jared. As Jared mentioned, my name is Jamie Parker. I am the Senior Investment Advisor at PNC in our Institutional Asset Management Group. I'm here with my partner, Will King. And for those of you that don't know, PNC is managing a strategic cash portfolio for the school. So when I say strategic cash, what that means is any excess cash over your operating cash. So that's the cash that the school would need to, to use for those daily operating purposes. This is any excess cash over those operating funds. So thanks for giving us an opportunity to come here and give you an update. With that being said, I'm actually gonna let Will provide the update. And of course, we, we're here to answer any questions once he's done.
Thank you, Jamie, and thank you, Jared. And it is a pleasure to be joining you all today. And as Jamie mentioned, my name is Will King and I'm an investment advisor as well with PNC Institutional Asset Management. We follow the principle that four eyes are better than two. And so we want to make sure that we are doing the best to take care of the funds that you have given to us to help manage. And ultimately, like Jamie, my responsibility is to help build and manage custom portfolios designed to help Lake Norman Charter School reach a specific objective that's unique to you all. And so on that note, when we think about the overall message we'd like to leave you with today, it's that when we look back at a challenging year for 2022, we still remain confident looking over the long-term positioning of the portfolio. Now that being said, when we look back at 2022 and what transpired, it's going to be a lot of what we all saw go through the headlines. And so there were two main things that really affected markets in the last year. The first being inflation and the second ultimately being rising interest rates. And the combination of elevated inflation and rising interest rates put pressure on corporate profit margins. I think we can all agree it all put pressure on our daily spending lot needs and our lives. I think we probably have all seen that egg prices have gone a little bit higher than what we've seen recently. And ultimately, that has been increasing the possibility of a recession coming in the new year. And so that being said, when we look at the fourth quarter in particular, the last bit of the 2022, what we found was that ultimately markets were positive during that time period. And so markets are forward-looking and during that period, what they saw is that inflation came down more than expected. And so ultimately, that led to some positivity that we saw in markets. And so for US stocks, we saw they went up during that fourth quarter about seven percent. We saw internationally, stocks went up about fourteen percent. And then US bonds were up about two percent during that time horizon. And so overall, as of December thirty-first, 2022, we saw the portfolio had an ending value of about 1.69 million. I think Jamie and I are both happy to say that that trend has continued to start the year. And as of this morning, we saw the portfolio ended with a value of 1.79 million. So we've seen a bright spot to start the year and looking well-timed transition for Slive, whoever was controlling that. So ultimately, looking at the performance of the portfolio as of December thirty-first, we can see for the quarter, it was up gross of fees about 5.34%. And then on the year, it was down about fifteen point seven. Now, the point I want to highlight again is when we think about this portfolio, the strategic cash, we have a long time horizon. And so think of it like a hike up a mountain. And so you're gonna have periods on this hike where you're going up. You're also gonna have some periods on this hike when you're going down. But ultimately, you have to go through some of those highs and lows to reach the peak of the hike. And so ultimately, we remain confident in that positioning over the portfolio and we remain broadly diversified as well. And so what we found is that companies that would be characterized as value tended to perform well over these time horizons we're seeing on the screen. And we also saw during that time period that companies that be classified as growth, an example being Amazon, faced a little bit more headwinds during this time horizon. And we have allocations to both in the portfolio, both value and growth. And that highlights the benefit of diversification because ultimately, Jamie and I would love to say over the next week, we can tell you what that's going to be. Ultimately, as I see some smiles, I think across the room, we can all agree that that is unlikely to be accurate and repeatable over a long time horizon. So we continue to remain diversified in the portfolio. And so if we can move to the next slide. Thank you. So when we look forward into the new year, the good that we see is the labor market remains strong. We also see that the consumer's balance sheet is in a good place at this point in time. When we look at ultimately where those challenges lie, inflation still remains persistently high. As we see with egg prices once again. And then when we look at what has been really a challenge, it's the supply chain disruptions we see from geopolitical conflicts in both Russia and Ukraine. And ultimately, when we think of when we add all these up, what are our expectations for next year? And if you can move to the next slide. Thank you. When we think for the next year, the catalyst that we would need to see to continue to see markets go higher in our view is a combination of continued easing of supply chains leading to lower inflation and ultimately a smoothing of rising interest rates going forward. And the good news is the recent meeting with the Federal Reserve, they indicated yesterday that that is in part in the market's opinion of where the direction is ultimately heading. So we look at that as a positive. But ultimately, there's still a lot of things that need to be solved in the coming year. And so we expect it to be bumpy. But that being said, over that long time horizon, we have for this portfolio and how we diversified it and done to account for that long time horizon and the potential the markets provide for that. And so on that note, Jamie and I would be happy to answer any questions you all have regarding the portfolio.
Thanks. I did have one question. You know, given that our portfolio is allocated a little bit heavier towards the fixed income, how are changing interest rates going to impact that part of the portfolio in particular? Or what are they expecting?
So Jared, it's a great question. And so when you think of interest rates, think of it this way. When interest rates go up, prices for bonds go down. And it's the opposite. If interest rates go down, then prices for bonds go up. And so if we're thinking about what that expectation is for interest rates in the new year, we think we're likely coming around the peak of where it will be, and it's more likely to go down than up going into the near future. And so what that ultimately means is that there's a potential for some positive price movement in bonds going into the new year. And as well, I will pass it off to Jamie.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing to point out is when you built this portfolio originally, interest rates were zero, right? Now they're at four and a half percent on cash. So we're in much higher interest rate environment. You've gone through the pain, you know, interest rates rose last year. We've taken the pain. We've taken the hit on prices, but going forward, the portfolio is going to be providing much more income. And we'll, you know, should make up with those losses as we hold over time. So it's a right now, fixed income is a very attractive asset class. It wasn't a year ago, but it is today.
Jared, is the is the goal to make additional investments into the portfolio over time? Are we kind of where we are, we're going to hold steady for the upcoming future?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we are doing is looking at leveraging some of the cash that we have on hand and investing it in more liquid assets as opposed to equities and fixed income. So Haley's been working with PNC to do that. Because right now, short term rates are 4%, I think you mentioned. So that's one of the strategies we're using, at least in this volatile period until we can set something that would be more recurring in nature.
I'm wondering if we can speak a little bit to the performance for our portfolio compared to the benchmark being a little bit worse. Can you explain that a little bit?
So it is a great question. What's your name? Nicole, it's a pleasure to meet you. So Nicole, when you're thinking of the benchmark in the portfolio, the way to think about it is ultimately on average, how are the managers we have in the portfolio doing relative to the broader benchmark? And so there was a difference between those two, and so our managers were a little bit more down than we saw from the broader market. That being said, when we built this portfolio, we built it over that long term time horizon. And so ultimately, what we found with some of these underlying managers is that they were underweight energy at the beginning of the year. And as we all saw, gas prices went up materially during that time horizon, which was beneficial for those that particular asset class. And so being underweight specifically some asset classes like that weighed on some of the individual managers' performance. And we do not expect that to continue going into the new year for that particular trend.
All right. Thank you. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and walk us through, and we hope to see you next year.
Jared, looking forward to the next time, and it was a pleasure meeting you all today. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have finance committee update. Fenford and Mrs. Wilson.
Hey, good evening, guys. So tonight, this is more of a FYI that we wanted to bring to the board. We were presented with an opportunity that the finance committee kind of reviewed and decided to go along with, but we just wanted to bring it to the board as a FYI. So the federal government has a program called ERC. Some of you may have heard of it. It's called Employee Retention Credits. So Employee Retention Credits is a tax credit that was created to help companies that were impacted by and during COVID-19. It's not a loan, therefore, the money received does not need to be paid back. The way it works is that eligible employees can claim a refundable tax credit up to 70% of the first 10,000 in qualified wages to employees from January the first of 2021 through to September 30th of 2021. In doing our research, we believe LNC would be eligible to apply for the credit on qualified wages from January the first of 2021 through to May 31st of 2021. If you guys remember, at that time, we were in Plan B when we started the year. We went to Plan A at one point in time when the Mecklenburg County shut us down. And then we finally transitioned into Plan C at the end of the year for all of our students, but it was staggered. So we were certainly impacted, we we firmly believed by COVID during that time, we were shut down based on government orders. It wasn't that we were in those plans on our choice. We were following all of the regulations that were coming down from the government order. So based on that, we did some calculations and potentially we could receive a credit of close to $2 million. So the way this works is that you would file an amended 941 with the tax credit. The IRS would look at it. It's about an eight to 12 month process right now. If if they believe you qualify, they would they would pay it. If not, then it would just not happen. So again, this is different from PPP. It's not a loan that we potentially may have to pay back and get forgiven. This is going to be just a tax credit that's available for companies that were impacted by COVID. One of the things I know you guys always usually ask, this is being applied for by all of our surrounding peer charters. We're not the only school looking to do this. It's just a great opportunity and with the uncertainty of funding, we have some positions that once ESAR runs out, that we want to hopefully maintain that this would be a great opportunity for us to have some additional revenue come in. We did, we spoke with two firms that do this, but then decided to work with our actual payroll financial provider, Acadia. So they would literally, they're the ones that do our 941s now, so I'm working with them on the calculations to prepare the amended 941. We would have them signed and sent in and then see what happens. So any questions?
Sorry, Haley, just so clear. It's a credit against the employer's portion of payroll taxes or?
Correct.
Yeah, and a shout out that Haley is not-
It's refundable. So even if we didn't pay as much, you get a refundable credit up to that amount.
And and what Haley did not share is originally when we started looking at firms that are doing this work, they would take a percentage to do these modified form forms for us, and it was usually between 10 to 25% of that. And what what Haley's been able to do with our our firm Acadia is saving us significant money on that. They they did a flat fee, so it was it was really smart of her to to do that. So venture for that. Thank you.
What's the timing? So in terms of understanding whether or not that credit would apply?
Honestly, Jared, the IRS is so bat logged, and what we've been informed is there's literally like one office that's doing this. So Acadia has had a couple that they've seen come through. They applied a lot earlier. So right now, it could be eight to 12 months after the time we submit the amended 941 before we hear anything.
Thank you.
Hey Haley, can you let us know why we are electing, I'm sure it's probably regulations or or whatnot, but to end it as a like our time period ends May 31st when the credit eligibility is through September?
Because when we returned, we weren't, we were back in normal. When we came back in August of 21, we were returned back to normal functioning.
So they're just, they're just mainly looking at like physical impact to operations. I mean-
And we're tying justification to the governor's order. And the governor's order ended at the end of the 2021 school year. Yeah.
Yeah, because I would still argue that we're still being impacted by COVID.
Agreed.
So I didn't know if it was very specific and it was like physical operations or?
It was if your business was shut down or impacted as a result of COVID. So everything that we've learned is we want to tie everything that we're doing to the governor's order. So that's why we're not even applying for June because our last day of school was in May. So we're just, we're being conservative. Could we push it? Yes, but I just feel like if they do come and audit, we can justify it better if we cut it off when the governor's order ended.
Great. Any additional questions? All right, we have our strategic committee updates. I will hand it over to a representative of the Thrive Committee for this month's update.
Thank you. So this month, we're looking at the student survey, and this will be our second annual student survey. Last year's results inform the work that we're doing this year. And it validated nighttime as a valuable resource for our students. So the survey objective is to evaluate the added classroom experience, ensure that we're creating an environment where all of our students can indeed thrive. And so questions that we are asking are leading to leadership in action, service, exploring extracurricular interests and opportunities for our students, looking at the school counseling program and underlying a sense of belonging for our students. So our students, seventh through 12th grades, will be taking the survey during nighttime. Also, this semester, we are going to have the first middle school career speaker series on the 13th. I know I saw on School G a call for parents. So if you are interested in sharing information about your career, they would love that help. The high school spring career speaker series is underway as well. I know Mr. Funchess will be reaching out to parents and career speakers this month to kind of set that up in the coming months. And we are working with the high school counseling department to look at how Naviance is currently used and will be expanded in its use in the future. And looking for ways that we can continue to help our students develop, find and develop their passions. So expanding it from the opportunities that are within Naviance and looking for, how do we scaffold that in the community? And then we're also exploring opportunities at the elementary school for elective spare. A little early for career exploration for an elementary school, so more of elective there, finding their interests and passions. And we're also going to continue to look at how we can hone and expand the Knights of Honor opportunity to include more students throughout our schools. That's it.
Thank you. And last but not least, we have our IDENA update. I believe Mr. Funchess is providing that update.
Actually, I think I'm providing that update, but Mr. Funchess is is going to be my backup. So it so that was kind of fun watching his face. So yeah, no, Ms. Chapman asked if I would provide the update. So in January, the achievements that the committee is happy to report is that we did have a staff professional development on January 4th, which was about engaging the whole child. So this is another example of where we can see IDEA and A overlaps with Thrive, right? If how are we engaging the whole child? And that was a partnership again with Nixon and Company who came in and did those sessions. And then they also, the IDEA folks held a Q and A session with our freshman teachers because we're going to be doing a rollout of some IDEA information to them through their nighttime like we did last year. So since the freshmen had not received that those modules, they'll be the only ones receiving that because the the sophomores through seniors did that last year. And under our second goal, it is mental, it was Mental Health Awareness Month. So at the high school, the diversity club did letters of support, working with a local nonprofit called Letters to Strangers, where they wrote letters of of support and encouragement to those folks who need it. In the middle school, they did a video helping students to better understand what mental health is and did a school-wide yoga and mindfulness exercise for those who are interested. And at the elementary, there were conversations about emotions. So as you can see, all of these are always age appropriate and while in line with trying to make sure that we're we're creating a culture of belonging, but but in an age appropriate way. And planning for the upcoming months, things that should happen this month is that on where we've invited the staff to join for the family engagement night. I was very impressed at the number of staff, board members, and community members who all came together for the first one that we had in November. So the the one, and you can kind of jump down to go for, our family and community engagement night is going to be on February 9th. It is the same amount of time, 6:30 to 8. It will be hosted again by Nixon and Company, but it will be virtual. So hopefully those folks that might have difficulty getting back on campus or just have other things going on that they could pop in and and take advantage of that. So we very much encourage our community to come learn more about what the overall vision is because it's important to understand what it is as much as is what it is not. So that's a that's a great opportunity to have dialogue around that and how we can best support every student so that they feel like this is a welcoming and safe space for all of them. It is also Black History Month, so at the high school, they're going to be doing twice a week announcements about lesser discussed black leaders and influential individuals. They are holding a movie night, Wakanda Forever, and doing some fundraising for upcoming diversity club activities. At the elementary school, they're going to be reading a book across all the grades K through four called More Than a Peach. And it's written by an author who is identified as a child crayon activist. And it was really cool. So each classroom will have a book and then the the crayons that reflect all the skin tones that you could possibly see in our student body. So to be more inclusive, and it's a great book. They'll also be using a unit on past and present black leaders and inventors. And as I mentioned before, the students at the high school will be, the freshmen will be receiving the microaggression training that happened last year. So more to come on the IDA night, but hopefully we can get lots of folks that that choose to tune in. And that's what I have. Mr. Funchess, did I miss anything?
Awesome.
All right. Thank you all. That concludes our agenda. So can I get a motion to move into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11a6?
This is Elizabeth Almud that we proceed pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11a6.
This is Nicole, second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, moving into closed session.